Okay, hello, everybody. I'm going to call to order the March 23 planning commission meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Langford, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd love to. Put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Barto, who is excused this evening.
Great, thank you. Public comments, this is the time in the meeting that will take public comments or not on the agenda tonight that are generally under the purview of the planning commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments three minutes or less. Okay, seeing none. Requests for continuances, staff, any requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, no requests for continuances.
Okay, moving on to consent items, consent item number one, the meeting minutes of March 9, 2023. We have a-
I'll make a motion to approve with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Wait a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right, call for a vote.
The motion carries five zero with Commissioner Harris abstaining.
Right, okay, we're going to move on to public hearing items.
Chair Elmore, I will be recusing myself on this next item as the project location is owned in part by my employer.
Okay, we're on to item number two, this is the tennis and pickleball club at Newport Beach, project amendment, site location 1602 East Coast Highway. I believe, staff, you have a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Elmore, I'm going to start this off here a little bit, planning commission did see this project or a variant of this project back in September of 2022. It went forward to the city council and the city council basically remanded it back for lack of pickleball being in the project. So the applicant has retooled, if you will, and included pickleball in the project and that is really the primary difference from what you saw back in September. I know Tristan, you weren't here for that public hearing, if I remember correctly. You were here? Okay, good. So that is the primary difference between what you saw in September and today and David Lee is still the project planner on it and we have a full presentation for you this evening and obviously we're available for questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to David Lee.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is David Lee with the planning division and again, this is the tennis and pickleball club at Newport Beach project amendment. The project is located at 1602 East Coast Highway. The subject site is currently developed with a tennis and pickleball club. It includes 16 tennis courts, 31 pickleball courts, a locker room, tennis clubhouse and onsite parking. As you can see, there are the Granville residences to the north, office buildings to the south and it is adjacent to the Newport Beach Country Club Golf Course and Clubhouse, which is not a part of this project. In terms of land use, the project site is designated as mixed use horizontal slash parks and recreation and it is zoned as PC 47, which is the Newport Beach Country Club Plan Community Text. Just want to give some project background, as Jim has mentioned also, but this project does have a approved, this site has an approved project that was approved by the city council in 2012 to reconstruct the existing tennis clubhouse, supervise seven tennis courts, a 27-room boutique hotel, including ancillary uses, and five detached single-family residences. The project included a 10-year development agreement permit, which was extended in 2022 for one year, so therefore the, that development agreement expires in September of this year. In 2022, which is last year, the applicant applied for an amendment to the approved project to add one additional tennis court for eight total, to add 14 hotel rooms for 41 total rooms, to add additional hotel ancillary uses and to convert three of the five single-family residences to attached condominiums. As Jim stated, it went, it was approved by the planning commission and it went to the city council and ultimately the city council remanded the project back to the planning commission to include pickleball. So this is the proposed amendment, as you can see now, the applicant has revised the project from seven tennis courts to a total of four tennis courts and 14 pickleball courts. The remainder of the application is the same that was seen in 2022 with the additional hotel rooms, ancillary hotel uses and the conversion of the single-family residences to condominiums. Here's the site plan of the project. I wanted to highlight where the location of the tennis courts and 14 pickleball courts are. As included in the project is a noise barrier, as you can see, the tennis courts are the closest sport courts to the Granville residences to the north, so there's more of a buffer between the pickleball courts and the residences and also the noise barrier is part of the project. The bottom right shows the photographs of the type of barriers that are being proposed and those are found in pickleball courts around the community in Newport Beach as well. The project includes residential portion, hotel units, the reconstructed clubhouse and the stadium, which includes two of the 14 pickleball courts. This is just a comparison between the 2012 approved project to the left and the proposed project to the right. Again, you have a different configuration of courts and you're adding pickleball courts, but generally the project is within the same footprint, you just have more hotel rooms, different residential layout and the same tennis clubhouse area. So tonight, the project entitlements include a general plan amendment, a local coastal program amendment, plan community development, plan amendment, which are legislative amendments. It also includes a new development agreement for a 10-year term. As part of the general plan amendment, staff has analyzed the project pursuant to charter section 423 and council policy A18 and has concluded that a no vote of the electorate is required with this project. There was also a review done based on the California Environmental Quality Act, so an addendum to the 2012 mitigated negative declaration was prepared by Chambers Group and the document concludes that the proposed amendment does not result in new significant impacts or additional mitigation measures in comparison to the 2012 project. Staff has provided a resolution and attached to the staff report with facts to support the findings. Staff has found that the project is consistent with the general plan and coastal land use plan, land use designations, is consistent with the intent of the plan community texts in terms of recreational courts. It is consistent with the character of the 2012 approved project and the surrounding neighborhood and this project does not bring new environmental impacts. I wanted to note, there was a Scrivener's error on page, hundred and page 12 of the staff report, on the bottom right corner, the amount of PM hour, peak hour trips remaining without vote is actually 15.84 and that was just a typo in the staff report. With all that being said, staff is recommending the planning commission conduct a public hearing, recommend approval of the project to the city council, which is tentatively scheduled for the May 23 meeting and just wanted to note that if approved by the planning commission and the city council, there is a local coastal program amendment, so it would require the approval by the coastal commission before it's effective. And that concludes my presentation, my name is David Lee, I'm available for questions. Our Sequoia consultant, Megan Gibson from Chambers Group is here and the applicant, Robert O'Hill and Jonathan Bailey are here, they have a presentation as well when you're ready for them.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Rosine.
Thank you for that, David, just a quick question, this is all the legislative actions that will take place potentially. This property would need to come back then for site development permit and is there anything else that they would need to do?
Yes, correct, Commissioner Rosine, they would need a site development permit, tract map amendment, coastal development permit and limited term permit are the application we foresee them coming back to the planning commission for in the future.
Okay, and then when this project, assuming that it's approved, comes back, would it be subject to state code at the time that the track map and the site plan were reviewed or would it be subject to today's approvals, potentially?
Well, we do have a development agreement, so the project would be consistent with what you see here in terms of the overall layout, the number of units, the square footages and all of that, the pickleball courts. The changes in the building code, which generally apply within the entire community, those would be applicable, so if the project were built, say, in seven years, is what the applicant has indicated, they would be subject to the building code in effect at the time they issued the permits and so that doesn't really affect the entitlement itself, but those kinds of generally applicable standards would apply to that future project.
Thank you, appreciate that.
But if, well, to also clarify, because of the development agreement, you know, if there was a change in the general plan or a change in the zoning code, those changes would not be applicable because the development agreement would supersede those.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Harris.
Thanks, David. Will you clarify this, so that 2012 was extended, it expires in September, is that correct? That's in hand, right, so they have that use. This one is totally separate, totally on its own, kind of standalone?
That's correct, that's correct, Commissioner Harris, it's a new development agreement and the existing one would expire in 2020, September of 2023 this year if this, yeah, if this wasn't approved.
But it is considered standalone on its own, okay.
Other questions of staff? I have a question, staff. The development agreement, when was it negotiated? Was it 20-
It was negotiated in 2012 and approved in 2012.
And then the public benefit fee that was associated with the development agreement of $502,250, what was, is that a new number or is that the number that was agreed upon in 2012?
That is the number that's agreed upon in 2012.
And is there, are there any annual increases associated with that number, any levers to bring that, that number up to market today?
So the, the existing agreement does have a CPI escalator that adjusts January 1st of every year and so that, that is occurring today. The, the agreement before you, which is a new agreement, has the same escalator starting January 1st from the effective date of the ordinance, which is actually effective date of the local coastal program amendment, so there will be a time lag between approval here locally and then and the effective date will be once the coastal commission approves it, but the escalator from 2012 to today is not reflected in the current draft of the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Harris?
I'll get it later.
Nope, okay. No more questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, I believe the applicant is here and has a presentation, unless you state your name for the record and please proceed.
My name is Jonathan Bailey and I'm here representing the applicant golf realty fund.
Chair Elmore, if we could just ex parte communications-
Oh, excuse me, yes, yeah, sorry, any ex parte communications, start with Commissioner Rosine.
I had a phone call with the operator of the tennis court.
None.
I spoke with a representative of the ownership.
None for me.
I spoke with the ownership and consultants also from the ownership.
Great, all right, open the public hearing and please proceed with your presentation, sorry about that.
No worries, so once again, I'm Jonathan Bailey, I'm here representing the applicant golf realty fund and I'm the project manager for this project. Like Jim and David said, we were here back in front of you in September of last year with essentially the same project, but this time, the project includes pickleball courts. This is the revised master site plan for our project. The, once again, the only difference is the four most southern tennis courts nearest to the parking lot have been replaced with 14 pickleball courts, two of which are stadium pickleball courts, the rest of the project remains the same. So we have the fairway loft building, which is 13 hotel units with one condominium at the very top of your screen and then we have two single-family homes south of that, which we call the villas and then south of that, we have the bungalows, which are little casitas that are hotel units and then the big building in the middle that has nine hotel units and two condos, that's what we call the bungalow loft building. And so in total, we have 41 hotel units and five residences. Three of the five residences are condominiums and they're located at the top of the bungalow loft and fairway loft buildings and the villas are more single-family style and that is the other five residences, what makes the five residences. And then we have the tennis clubhouse, spa and fitness center, which is also the same as before, and a pool. This is the view from the golf course of the project, so in the foreground, there's the bungalows that I mentioned, which are the small little casitas and then the taller buildings in the back, the one on the right is the bungalow loft building and the one on the left is the fairway loft building. This is a close-up elevation of the bungalow loft building. This is the first floor of the bungalow loft building, so this includes some of the loft hotel units on the left-hand side of your screen and then on the right-hand side has some ancillary uses to the hotel like performance therapy, yoga pavilion and a hotel office. This is a close-up elevation of the fairway loft building. This is the top floor of the fairway loft building and this includes one of the condominiums, one of the three condominiums. This is a zoomed-in site plan of the spa, fitness center, tennis clubhouse and pool. If I'm going too fast, let me know. This is the pool attendant area, so this is where the pool boy would hang out, give you his towels, all that stuff. And then we have the fitness desk area, so this is where you would check in for the fitness center. This is the men's and women's locker room area. This is a zoomed-in site plan of the one difference that we're bringing to you now, which is the new core configuration. So once again, as you can see, rather than eight tennis courts, which is what we had back in September, we now have four tennis courts and 14 pickleball courts, two of the pickleball courts are stadium pickleball courts. There are built-in three rows of seating and then, as you will see in the middle, on either side, there is a deck with tables and chairs for viewing and there's also a social area for members in the middle of all the courts. So with adding the 14 pickleball courts to the plan, as David mentioned, we also included some sound mitigation measures and so the blue dash line that goes from the top left of the screen down around the perimeter of the courts, that is where we will be installing sound buffer equipment and the sound buffer equipment is from Anderson Special Industries and was recommended to us by the city and is the same spec and the same manufacturer as they are installing in the public courts in the city. Also, what we've done is we purposely put the four tennis courts up at the north end of the property nearest to Granville and we put the pickleball courts at the south end of the property nearest to the parking lot because of course tennis is a lot quieter than pickleball. In conclusion, we ask that you please vote to approve our Plan B amendment tonight because, one, planning staff has spent hundreds of hours reviewing the project and has made findings recommending approval, two, because planning commission gave unanimous approval on nearly the same project six months ago, the only difference is now we have pickleball courts, and three, because this is the project that the managing owner of the property wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant while we have them up here? Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. I want to commend you on a much clearer project and I think it, you know, there, there was a lot of confusion in the last time and so I appreciate a lot more clarity on this one, makes a lot more sense, kind of hits everyone. For the condos, are you planning to do for sale or for rent, do you know?
The condos are for sale, so the five residences being the three condos and the two villas, all five of those are for sale.
Do you have any parking agreements with your neighbors? Have you needed any? I know, I think Irvine company's next door or at the club.
So right now, with just onsite parking, we do fulfill all parking requirements, we have enough spots for every single use, but the op, current operator of the pickleball and tennis club, Sean, has been working with Corporate Plaza West to get an easement for 30 additional parking spots.
Also, when do you guys plan to build? I mean, is it kind of as soon as you get coastal?
So our plan to build right now is in 2032, we break ground.
Right at the end of the expiration? So right, okay, like, okay, are you guys, are we going to see you again for another extension? That sounds like it's pretty-
Well, we anticipate-
You explain the timeline?
Well, we anticipate that by the time we get through coastal and the development agreement becomes effective, that we will still have ample time to build.
Okay.
But we have, we have made promises to the pickleball members that the club will stay as is until 2032, well, at least we will not break ground until 2032.
Okay, okay, that's good, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to anybody in the audience that would wish to speak on this matter. All right, please state your name for the record.
My name is Brett Fierstein and this is Ryan Chase. Good evening, Chair Elmore and honorable planning commissioners, very much appreciate you allowing us to speak in front of you again, I know it feels like deja vu, we've already done this, but thank you for your time. As you know, we own 50% of the tennis and pickleball club as tenants in common with Mr. Robert O'Hill owning, on behalf of Golf Realty Fund owning the other half. Right now, we are currently in arbitration and we don't believe that he has the legal authority to submit this application without our consent, but we don't want to bother you with that, but we want you to know that that is what we are doing right now and that was ongoing and hopefully will finish up in July. Back in September, we presented Mr. O'Hill with a lease to keep the pickleball and tennis club the way it is right now with Mario Morovic. We believe that that is a, the right thing to do, that this club is absolutely amazing. We didn't realize it, I mean, probably started three years ago, just seeing the rise of pickleball, the prominence of this club and the love that this club has from the community and that we would be very excited to keep that going, that is our plan. There's been a lot of rumors going around that we want to do apartments and I want to restate for the record that there will absolutely not be apartments, that is not our plan, we have no plan of that, we want a lease for 10 years with Mario Morovic that has an option for up to another 10 years because we feel that that is financially the right thing to do, is what the community wants and that is the only thing that is on the table right now with our, with our partner. So we just wanted to come here, set the record straight for what is going on behind the scenes. We apologize for all that, you know, the city's had to go through with this and hopefully we'll be able to clean it up privately and make the city proud. We're here for any other questions and we really appreciate everything that you do for the city, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Chair Elmore, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the new plan that we just saw, I think the relocation of the pickleball courts further away from the residences is a positive development. From what I've seen, I remain uncertain how much of the proposed development is clubhouse and how much is fitness center and how you distinguish the two from each other, but what I want to talk to you about is the charter section 423, so-called green light analysis. I submitted some comments in writing, I do not think city staff is properly analyzing this and analyzing general plan amendments as our charter asks for them to be analyzed, I think is the proper thing to do. Under our charter, the analysis is supposed to be based on adding the current proposal, what is going to be added to the general plan, to 80% of previous additions to the general plan in the last 10 years. The city seems to believe that a major portion of this proposal was added to the general plan in 2012 and I think Mr. O'Hill has a good faith belief that the voters actually approved the entire project back in 2006, but neither of those is correct. And so if I can explain what happened in 2006, when the voters approved the general plan, is that they approved the existing facility, which was a 3,725 square foot clubhouse and 24 tennis courts. They also made this property part of something called the MUH3 district or category in the general plan, which entitled Mr. O'Hill an opportunity to add as many as 65 more hotel rooms or 450 dwelling units. However, the MUH3 area is much bigger than this property and by the time Mr. O'Hill came to the city with his proposal in 2012, all of those hotel rooms had been used elsewhere and only five of the dwelling units were left, plus there was a competing proposal for expanding the golf clubhouse adjacent to this. That was processed as a general plan amendment, this was not. So none of this development you're seeing tonight, other than the original clubhouse and 24 tennis courts, has ever been in the general plan, has ever been tracked towards green light. So the proposal is not what the staff says, but it is to reduce the number of courts currently in the general plan from 24 down to 18, that's minus six, and it is to add 41 hotel rooms because currently and forever, there have never been any added to the general Currently, at the, in 2012, it would have gone over the limit to add even 27 hotel rooms. Because more than 10 years has expired since 2012, there is now 40,000 square feet of development left in Newport Center. Mr. O'Hill could propose 40 hotel rooms without a vote if the council wanted to use all of that on this project, but 41 is one hotel room over the limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, applicant, would you like to say any final remarks or a response to anything that you heard here? Okay, staff, any comments for the record?
Sure, obviously, we've presented our charter 423 analysis in the staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions related to that, but you know, humbly, we just disagree with Mr. Mosher in terms of how he views the general plan. We feel we've done the analysis correctly and no vote of the electorate would be required if this project were to be approved by the city council.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I will bring this back to the commissioners for discussion. I'll start down with Commissioner Rosine, any thoughts, questions, comments? No? Commissioner Klassenmer? Commissioner Harris?
I mean, I, you know, I'm a lot more clear on the project, I think it checks more, every box or more boxes than did, but I'm a little confused on the timeline. You know, I feel like we're giving 20 years away. On the DA, I, I'm kind of looking at a different one, so I think what you brought up, I would, I would kind of urge council at least to look at, you know, their agreement, that's not really our purview, but their agreement and maybe see what kind of impacts or, or else if it holds any units or things over another 10 years, that's like 20 years to the same applicant, it's just a lot of time. We've only done that a couple times, I think, we were saying, for Hoag and for- We've only done that a couple times, I think we were saying, for Hoag and for the cemetery, so I think that's a long time. And then this, you know, 2032 promised to build or not to build until then, I mean, I'm slightly confused, I just think that's, you know, coastal's going to take eight years, that's just a long time, but.
I would just point out that the, the last three DAs, at least in my tenure here, have been 10-year DAs, just for the, you know, benefit of the body. And then, of course, the effective date is told based on any litigation referendum and/or the coastal development permit approval, so just wanted to provide that information.
Commissioner Lowry, any comments?
I mean, just a couple of things. I mean, it's, it's, it seems similar to, to what we saw last time, except as was, as pointed out, that the pickleball courts are more outlined in the total number, so I'd, I don't, I actually think that's good. I, I know last time we had a lot of, of the members here, and it seems like with not as many members coming up and speaking, that seems like maybe the membership is at least satisfied, or at least is not concerned enough where they're, where they're here, and it sounds like there's going to be a, at least in, in terms of a, of a, let's say, commitment or at least a, maybe an understanding between Mr. O'Hill and, and the, and the club, that they're going to kind of be hands-off for the next 10 years. So looking at really just from, from, from our point of view, from planning commission, it ju, it seems to me that, that, you know, we just basically improved on what we had on the, on the, on the last run around, just be, last go-around because of the, you know, outlining the pickleball courts. And I, I understand, I get it, I've been in private sector my whole life, so I understand when, when partnerships maybe have disagreements, but I'm kind of going along with what the city has and believes that Mr. O'Hill, Mr. O'Hill is the, is the managing member, so can bring this forward and, 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 you know, maybe from, from the other side, when it comes to signing maps and all of that, they'll, they'll have to come, come together. So looking at this just from a specific, specific area, as a planning commissioner, it seems to me that this is an improvement, and, and I would be in the affirmative to vote for this.
I, I agree with basically everything that Commissioner Lowry said. I do think there was an oversight in the development agreement in terms of the dollar amount at $502,250. That was a number that was based upon 2012 numbers, and if we were, I think the document should reflect a CPI increase up until the extension or when this is redrafted in 2023. So CPI all to 2023, net new number, and then CPI again on a go-forward basis, I believe is the accurate way to be compounding this development agreement, $500,000 from 2012 to today's dollars. And I'd make that as a recommendation for approval that was made here tonight. Do, any motions?
I was actually, so, real quick questions. Jim, could that escalator for the fees, how does that work again? I, I didn't, didn't quite grasp that, I was trying to.
Sure, so, so once the, it's, it's basically set up to, from the effective date of the agreement, which was basically a decade ago, and every January 1st, it would, would, the fees would escalate, and then they would pay whatever that number is at the time they actually pulled the building permits for the project. And so, you know, up, up through the term of the agreement. So, you know, I, I, I get the Mr. Elmore's point, you know, maybe we ought to escalate the number to the present value, the 93,000, the, well, in total, it's $502,000 or thereabouts, escalate it to today, and then maintain the same escalator going forward for the next decade, if that's what I understand your recommendation is.
That's correct, yeah. And I think that was the intent of how you probably meant to draft it, and I just don't think it was maybe captured that way.
Well, I think when we, when we worked on this initially, this was an amendment to the existing agreement, so it never would have.
Right, it wouldn't have been redrafted.
Continued to, to go forward.
And then here, and then we, and we have another extension, and it's got to go, and it doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, and, and this is a new agreement, and I think that was just an oversight to, on our part, to make sure that that escalator continued from the original date of the development agreement, and that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, great. Yeah, Commissioner Klassen.
The public benefit fee, is this, if there was not a development agreement in place, would this fee be in addition to any impact fees that another project would pay?
It, it is in, in addition to any other fees that they would otherwise pay, you know, all, all permit fees, fair share fees, and then any other fee that would be applicable, yes.
I'm supportive of what, what you've just articulated.
And we have a motion? Commissioner Rosin?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion with the recommendation, the additional recommendation to council in regard to the DA that was drafted up here, and that would be for PA 2021-260. Motion to approve.
Great, I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on, staff and commissioner items. Item number three, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing?
It, it would be any motion of the body.
Okay. Item number four, report by the community development director. A request for matters to be placed on future agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, what I don't have in front of me is my schedule. I usually go over the schedule at this point in time. Bear with me here if I can find it. So we have a meeting coming up in April, I believe it's April 6th. Oh, thank you, Clarabelle, she saved me, as she always does, she keeps me out of trouble. April 6th, we have two items coming for, well, I actually only have one item coming forward. It's the housing element implementation and noise-related amendments. And so this is an amendment to the, the noise element and the housing, I'm sorry, land use element and the noise element, and several sections of our municipal code and a few planned community texts. And the purpose of that is, is to make those policies align with the most recent certified housing element. So that's coming forward at the next meeting. And that concludes my report. We have a, we have four items coming up on our April 20th meeting. Have this report here.
Great.
The other item for April 6th is, is not going to be occurring on that hearing date.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to comment on these items? Okay, seeing none. Item number five, request for excused absences. Do we have any requests for excused absences? I, I think I will be out at the next meeting, so we can go ahead and mark that one, for sure. And we are adjourned at 7:07 PM.